The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Lord with his saints, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jamal, will you say that in person?
Sure. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to stand and to serve your people. We ask that you give us the wisdom, guidance, and the understanding to do what needs to be done for the betterment of the county in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Number four, approval of agenda. Number seven.
Second.
All in favor? Number five, presentations or plaques. Ms. Kay, will you come up? The plaque reads, "Presented to Ms. Kay McKeezy, July 18th, 1983 through June 30th, 2023, and grateful appreciation for forty years of distinguished service to Dillon County and its citizens. Twenty-five years of service as Dillon County Auditor, presented, I'm sorry, presented June 28th, 2023, by Chairman Stevie Grace, Vice Chairwoman Detrice McCollum Dawkins, Councilman Robbie Cowan, Buzzie Finkden, Jamal Campbell, Dennis Townsend, and Kenny Cook, County Administrator Tim Harper, and from clerk to counsel, Lucilla Blakey." Thank you for your presence. Thank y'all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim's got some hard time going. You all have one?
Well, if I get bored, I'll...
I promise you, I promise they use you.
Maybe a day or two, but that's it.
We'll take all we can get, Ms. Kay.
Next presentation is Judge Charles Spiley by Mr. Townsend.
Judge Spiley, come on up. If you want to bring them, maybe. You want to bring?
Hmm?
You want to bring your better half and the rest of the family?
I'll agree with whatever.
Good deal. All right. Madam Chairman and Councilman, gives me a great deal of pride and pleasure to present this plaque to Judge Charles Spiley, recognition of his honorable service of twenty-nine years from July 1st, 1994 to June 30th, 2023, as a magistrate of Dillon County. Charles, I want to thank you for your dedication to the judicial system and your loyalty to Dillon County. Appreciate all the time you present with us. I want to wish you the best in the next chapter of your life, whether it's retirement or whatever it is, and I'd like to wish Ms. Jeanette our sympathy. Having spent all this time with you. Congratulations.
Next, we have approval of minutes for May 24, 2023. Requires motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
All in favor? Number seven, public hearing, third reading, number 23-05, in ordinance to provide budget appropriations for county purposes in the county of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, and adopt and implement rates and fees and for other tax purposes and county appropriations purposes, and to establish the tax mileage to provide for the budget.
Do you have any more sign now?
No, they signed it. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll just take it there.
All in favor?
What do I do?
Closing the public hearing, Steve.
Okay.
Number eight, third reading, number 23-05, in ordinance to provide budget appropriations for county purposes in the county of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, and adopt and implement rates and fees and for the other tax purposes and county appropriations purposes, and to establish the tax mileage to provide for the budget. Requires motion.
Make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Number nine, the ordinance number 23-07, first reading, by title only, an ordinance by Dillon County Council changing the zoning map classifications of property located at tax map number 102-00-00-130, consisting of two acres, proposed location 2061 Highway 917 West Loud, South Carolina, for rule to general commercial. Requires motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
All in favor.
Number 10, resolution number 23-8, calling for the adoption of the updated hazard mitigation plan for the PD region of South Carolina. Requires motion.
I'll make that motion.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is our regional mitigation plan that we have to do every so many years. This is a copy of it here, so it's a pretty thick document. I sent that to you in an email. But this is a regional plan, and the Council of Governors has put that together for us.
This requires a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Number 11, ordinance reading number 23-09, first reading, authorizing the issuance and sale of a not exceeding 1.5 million general obligation bond, Series 2023 of Dillon County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, authorizing the Chairman of the County Council and the County Administrator to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, the deposition of the proceeds of the bond, and other matters relating thereto. Requires motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Number 12. Oh, all in favor?
All in favor.
Teresa Moody, ordinance and zoning regulations. Yes, ma'am. You have three minutes.
I probably run out of time here, but I'll try to get the proper space so I can get a hold of you and catch on to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and all council members, for allowing me to speak here today. First, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Teresa Moody, and I'm a lifelong resident of Dillon County. I have been at my current address for thirty-six years. I am a Marion County employee, and July will mark my twenty-second year. I have held this position of Director of Voter Registration Elections for seventeen years. My experience in this field of work began in Dillon County with Susie Edwards. So as a county employee, I am aware of our duty and responsibility to serve our citizens that we work for. The reason I am here today is concerning zoning ordinances for my address and adjoining properties. In early April, I made a phone call to Dillon County Code Enforcement to question if roosters were allowed on the property beside me. I spoke with Ms. Emily. She stated to me that the area was RS2, that it was residential, and it was not allowed. She stated that she would have Mr. Price to call me back. I never got a return call, so I called on April 11th and did speak with Mr. Price. He also said that the area was RS2. I asked if the roosters were prohibited and never got a clear explanation. All I got was there is no law saying that he couldn't have them or how many he could have. Mr. Price said that he would go speak with my neighbor. My first call to Councilman Cook was on April 17th about my concerns. He was very receptive and said that he would speak with Mr. Harper and give me a call back. I visited the administration office on April 28th and spoke with Mr. Harper about the rooster situation. He tells me there's no ordinance to prohibit the roosters. He also advised me to consult with an attorney to interpret the ordinances in zoning. I also, on the same day, went to code enforcement and spoke with Ms. Emily. She gave me copies of my zoning ordinance, which was RS2, which also includes RS1. A lot of confusion was had about current ordinances because of what is posted online. I have been told that it is not correct. If it is not correct, it should certainly be taken down. I have made multiple calls and visits to code enforcement, and nothing has been resolved, to my knowledge. I am aware of a committee meeting that was held on June 13th, and only after that meeting, I was contacted to sign a formal complaint, which was on June 20th. Why wasn't I afforded this opportunity when I first made the complaint back in the first of April? I have no issues with someone having roosters. The issue at hand is the extreme numbers in our zoning ordinance. I have personally counted more than 100. These roosters are right outside my bedroom window. They wake me from sleep early in the morning. There is constant crying, and it never stops. I have placed a noise complaint with the Sheriff's Department, and I have also received a threatening message concerning these roosters, saying that I should call the county office and tell them that I don't have any problems. And this is also being recorded with the Sheriff's Department. I didn't expect or want to come up here. I thought when I made my first complaint back in April that the code enforcement would handle this. I don't feel like I should be up here, both in my opinion. I feel like if there's a zoning ordinance against it, that it shouldn't be allowed. It's two and a half months later, and I still haven't heard anything, any resolution, nothing. And that's where I stand today. If my zoning regulations say that it's not allowed, I don't understand why two and a half months later, nothing's been done. And I understand, they said, no, the county doesn't have a noise ordinance, so I'm not standing before you to enforce the noise ordinance. I'm standing in front of you, asking you if you will enforce your zoning regulations.
All right, there you go. Can you focus on the roost?
I don't know what he's doing, sir. They're all staked by their leads. I have pictures that I brought with me, the lot that's containing the roosters, my lot, how long it's been there by Google Maps. I made my first complaint in April. March, Google shows that there were no roosters beside my house. So as soon as they started going there, I called and made my first complaint. And today, they're still there. And my zoning ordinances that I got from code enforcement, all I've heard is they've got to be moved, they've got to be moved. They're still there. I would like to know a timeframe, if I'm allowed to find that out, so I won't have to keep constantly calling somebody and calling. It doesn't make any sense to me, none at all. Like I said, I'm a county employee. I know you've got responsibilities to your citizens. Don't leave them hanging. I feel like I should be, I should know something by now, if there's a process that I need to follow, I'm more than willing to follow it. But if you have zoning ordinances that says it's not allowed, why is it still being allowed two and a half months later?
Thank you, Ms. Moody.
Thank you.
Will you go talk about it, too? Let's move on.
Well, if you want to, you can refer to me and the attorney, and we'll move forward with it.
Madam Chair, I recommend we refer to the County Administrator and our leading council. That brings back their resolution. And that we respond to this meeting.
Okay. Number 13, All-Star Teams.
Yeah, there are more All-Star Teams from Delmar Lata Lake Unit going on about three hours late. I wanted to make a motion to give each team $600. And they're city-based teams. They're not travel teams. They're with the municipal.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
In favor.
Number 14, Council Recreation Quest. Okay, we have Oak Grove, Neighborhood Watch. Mr. Buzzing, who wants to donate $225. Anybody else?
Fifty.
Not yet. Okay. Station Two Fire Department, Mr. Buzzing's donating $225. Dillon County Chamber of Commerce, Dennis Townsend's donating $100.
For county leadership institute.
Lakeview Rescue Squad, Dennis Townsend is donating $250.
I'll write it down for 100 there.
Mojo Softball Team, Stevie Grace is donating $250. Girls with Knowledge, Mentoring Group, Back to School, and Supply Drive, and that's sponsored by First Bank. Rob is donating $100.
I'll get one, I'll get two. How many fifty?
Dillon Cowards Baseball Outlaws, that's for Huggins.
That's what we just got.
No, I'm giving to Huggins. I'm gonna do 150. To who? It's actually Huggins. Huggins. Save Our Youth Movement, Marcus Hagerd. He's having his fifth annual gala, and he's inviting all the council members to please come out and celebrate. This is gonna be July 8th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in Lake City, South Carolina. And he will award three seniors of Dillon High School, two seniors of Lata High, and one senior of Lakeview High School. And he's asking for donations.
I already gave him my...
450. 450.
Give 100, Mr. Hagerd. I'll do 100, sir.
Town of Lakeview Recreation Department. Even the things...
That was part of it.
That's part of it. Oh, okay. That's all. This requires a motion.
This one. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion instead, folks.
All right. All in favor? Okay, any committee appointments? I have one on the road. Plan B, R.G. Samuel. Do you have any, Jamal?
No.
Stevie, do you have any committee appointments?
Excuse me?
Do you have any committee appointments for the Library Board or the Family Commission?
I've not established.
Requires motion.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
In favor.
Number 16, Trinity Behavioral Care Reappointments. We have James McPray Chair, Carmen Lisa Batte, Vice Chair, Carrie Townsend, Earl Gleason, Jr.
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion with re- reappoint.
All in favor?
In favor.
Number 17, Request to Transfer Defender Skid Unit from Dillon County Fire Station 3 to Florida Fire and Rescue. Requires motion.
I'll make that motion.
Number seven.
I'll say.
All in favor?
In favor.
Audit Report, William Hancock.
Good evening. Mr. Harper, members of the County Councils, thank y'all for having us. My name's Bill Hancock. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself, tell you a little bit about our firm, and we're gonna go into y'all's audit report. Each of you should have a gray bound copy. My daddy's people are from Mutt Now. My mama's people are from Mayville. If you know where those places are, you know. If you don't, you might not ever. I grew up in Camden, South Carolina, graduated from the Citadel, spent two years in graduate program at the University of South Carolina. Went to work for the Breeding Hand Brew in 1992. I've been there ever since. Breeding Hand Brew was founded in 1957 in West Columbia, South Carolina. Currently, we have two counties, three technical colleges, and about sixty cities and towns with special purpose districts, as well as about another thirty or forty nonprofit organizations that need and ought to work for. Towns with populations as small as 147 to our biggest client, Lexington County, which has a population of several hundred thousand. So, say Dillon County is in our wheelhouse. All right, so, let's talk about the audit issue. You've got page numbers on the lower corners of these pages. I'm gonna jump around a little bit, because the format of this really doesn't lend itself to a smooth flow of presentation. But the first thing we want to talk about is what's on pages one through three. Pages one through three is our overall opinion of the financial statements as you all have presented, all right? This was not a got-you audit. We're not here looking for problems. We're looking to see if things are materially correct. Meaning, if somebody was to look at it, they could make a decision based on what they said. You folks got an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion, which is the highest mark we can give, all right? So I told you I was gonna bounce around a little bit, and we are. We're gonna go to... We're gonna go to page 49. Page 49, this is again, this is a letter where we issue opinions. One of the opinions we issue is on your internal control of the financial reporting, and the other opinion is about whether or not you're in compliance with measures that have been placed upon you by outside entities. When we look at an internal control system, and we examine it from the outside as auditors, no internal control system is perfect, because you all have human beings working here. But when we look at a system or a process, we have to measure, well, if we think there's a better way, is the benefit to be gained greater than the cost of implementation and changes that process? And we didn't find that to be the case in any of your systems, all right? Not to say that something couldn't be improved upon. It's just, in our opinion, at this point in time, we don't feel like a change is gonna yield you any benefits of material effect on this. So then, let's talk about compliance. What all do you have to be in compliance with? Well, first of all, you got employees, so you're withholding taxes. You gotta pay them, and you gotta pay them on time. And we didn't find any instances where that was done wrong. Then you withholding retirement monies. We didn't find any instances where that went in the wrong amount or was not in a timely manner. You're also withholding and paying health insurance for the employees. We didn't find where we dropped the ball on that at any point in time. You also gotta be compliant with your magistrate court system, okay? Every month, you gotta send more than half the fines that you collect into the state treasurer's office. And if you don't, they get very upset. We didn't find where y'all were late, or any others, and we didn't find where the amounts were calculated improperly either. As there's other compliance issues, none of them rise to the level of what those that I just described. But we didn't find any problems of note, or else we would have already discussed them with your financing administration. Okay? Any questions on that before I move on? I know this is good stuff, folks. All right. Let's talk about the budget. Let's go to page 10. Mind you, we're looking at fiscal year end, June 30th, 2022 numbers. We got this engagement late in the year. We had some staff turnover. And the COVID bug seemed to bite us about every other week, until recently. I don't think we've had a COVID case in the office for about a good month, month and two maybe. But this past winter, it got us pretty good. All right, so, you folks passed a budget, and it was, of course, it was a balanced budget as required by state law. And you can see on page 10 that you've got your revenues by source, and you've got your expenditures pretty much by department, okay? And you can see that, you know, you did better than expected on your revenues, right? And you overspent on the expenditure side. Well, that's largely in part because you took in more money than you thought you were going to, all right? So at the end of the day, we ended up with a surplus of about a million eight. Well, why is that? But you gotta remember, a lot more than government and revenues came through this past year than normal, namely, the opera funds, okay? So, and those opera funds were about a million three. So if you take that out, you're within $500,000, guessing right, on a $20 million budget, all right? So that means that even though when you were making this budget up in probably April and May of 2020, there's a few things going on in May of 2020, if you'll remember. Y'all made a pretty good guess, okay? Now, the last thing I was gonna discuss with you folks before we open it up for questions in further discussion is your share of the state pension plan, the unfunded liability. That starts off at page 30, but I'm gonna take you to page 32. And we're gonna go through a little exercise that I like to call, "Does that make sense?" So, the unfunded amount of the state's pension plan and your fair share that you're having to report it is an accounting pronouncement, all right? It's not exactly legally correct to say that you're a fair share, because state constitution reads that if there's a shortfall, the state will cover it, not you. Also, if you had the $17 million that's your quote-unquote "fair" share, you wouldn't be allowed to pay it, and then you got promoted as obligation. It's a moving target that hopefully will go down in time as investments grow and contributions continue to pour in. But on page 32, we're gonna talk about what makes the estimated future value what it is. Okay? They say that we got this much we're gonna be paying out in the future. And so that amount is based on some assumptions. Well, bottom of page 32, here's one of the assumptions. You can see in this table, they're assuming that every single state employee, or county, or municipal, or school district employee, every single one of those is gonna get a raise every single year between 3% and 11%. Does that sound good, Tim? That's probably not realistic, and we'll just leave it at that, okay? So if you're, in this calculation, they're expecting everybody to get a 3% to 11% increase every year. That pushes that future amount up, right? Got follow what I'm saying, okay? All right. Let's go to page 33. All right, in that table there, they break down the employees and the participants in this plan by educators, general employees, and public safety and firefighters. And by example, what they do is they estimate the lives on it. So these educators, they're saying a male educator, they're gonna put a 95% multiplier on that male educator's life, meaning that he's gonna live 95% of what the average person would live, meaning those kids are taking 5% of his life from them, okay? That makes sense, you know? And that says 94% for a female educator. I can understand that. But let's look at public safety and firefighters, coming on highway patrolmen, firemen, EMS, city cops, deputy sheriffs. They put 127% multiplier on their lives. Okay, so that means if the average person's gonna live to be 80, every firefighter, every cop, every EMS worker's gonna live to be about 180. So if they're gonna live that long, that's gonna increase the amount that we're gonna have to set aside to pay them. And so, that's my illustration of why maybe your fair share of the $17 million probably isn't 100% accurate and it won't come to be that. That's just an estimation based on some of these factors. So if you're ever in a conversation about this kind of stuff, which is just, I love it, it's fun stuff, it's not quite as bad as it looks, okay? It's based on a lot of estimations, a lot of estimations, the actuaries... And it's based on a lot of estimations, a lot of estimations. The actuaries come up with these figures. All right, I've thrown a lot of information at you guys really quick. I'll be happy to go over this in more detail, ask you questions. What's your pleasure?
I got a couple of questions. One, I understand what you said about the actuary tables and everything you guys. I understand what you said about the retirement system, retired state employee. And I I hope the system sounds for many years and I dare to enjoy it. And I look forward to it at the end of every one. But with that said and done, we have no say so in what we contribute, et cetera. So even though everything you've said was probably accurate as you could get, anything you could go about it.
No, you you are, you're mandated by state law to withhold nine percent on regular employees, nine point seven five percent on public safety employees, and then you're mandated to match, what, sixteen percent on one and eighteen percent on another? Uh, twenty percent. It gets going up one percent a year, so, you know, for 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 the public safety people, but between the matching, the between the withholding and the match, I think it's the thirty percent now, of course, to it. Yeah, that's a, that's a tough deal.
And the other thing that I that I proved is that our procedures and the method that we've done so far are finance people, treasury, and everybody else, done pretty good.
Well, we've poked around pretty good. Like I said, this was not a gotcha engagement.
But it says you approached with skepticism.
Well, we approached it with skepticism, and that means we asked a lot of questions, and we did a lot of analytical procedures on if we, if if your middle grade is X, we expect your tax revenues to be Y, and we found that to be. Um, you know, we 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 look at that, the number of um tickets that were issued in magistrate court, and from that, we determined from historical analysis that each ticket written generates an average, you know, net proceeds to the county of this, and we found that to be pretty close. And we tested your systems, meaning, for instance, dispersals. We got a count, we got a population of every single check county record for the whole year, and we pulled a random sample of twenty-five, and we tested them for about seven different attributes. Was it classified properly? Was it paid on time? Did it get charged to the right account in the books? All right, was it canceled? So there wasn't a chance of it getting paid twice? Did it clear the bank in a reasonable time? And we didn't have any exceptions. And so the standards tell us that if we do a a random sample, or we don't have any exceptions, then the system of the process can be relied upon for actively capturing and recording that stuff in your financial statements.
And good in layman's terms, the juice won't be worth the squeeze to change up procedures.
That's one, that's one way to put it.
That's okay. And that our staff did a pretty fair job.
Staff were very responsive. Um, you know, like I said, we were engaged late in the game, and that's because y'all changed auditors from one year to the next, and then the next year to this. Um, and so we we hope that we've found the stabilization with the county, with the county happy with the folks that are doing cleanup and closeout work, and that you'll be happy with us in the future. And I expect to have any rough order ahead.
Give my life and our staff, and recognize the job they've done, and relate that to them at some point in the future. We appreciate the hard work they've done, and it's shaped forth and out. That's what I was able to, I wasn't trying to agree with you. I was trying to add that I thought maybe that's what you were saying.
We didn't, we didn't have any problems with any more. Most of it was a request for information. It was just a matter of time rounding it up and getting to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for having us, and I look forward to seeing you again. We've already started preliminary work on this coming year's audit. Uh, Mr. Harper knows how to get ahold of me. If y'all have any questions, don't hesitate to call, and I'd ask the excuse of this.
Okay. Appreciate your call.
Number nineteen, approval of the darkness report, shelter building, the.
Madam Chair, uh, we bid the project out. We had a pre-bid conference, had four contractors at the pre-bid conference. But at the end, when the bids come in, we only had one bid, and that was from the Troika Group of the Carolinas. Um, and their bid was three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. As y'all know, three hundred thousand of that was coming from the funding that Senator Williams got, and then in addition, the rest of the money paid for this was coming from the money Representative Hayes got for us. So I'd like to recommend to council to uh move forward to accepting that bid. We will meet with the uh Mr. McLeod, make sure he's got his bonds and and everything in place before we sign the contract and move forward, if council approves it.
I think emotionally, we accept this bid.
All right. I'll second that motion. All in favor? All opposed?
Opposed. I'm not opposed to a project. I just think we need more bids.
Number twenty, we're gonna go into executive session um to discuss legal advice and legal matters receipt of an attorney-client privilege, legal briefing, and receipt of legal advice regarding and pending lots of South Carolina Code three zero dash four dash seven zero.
And also a legal matter reference to.
Yeah, two illegal dumping. Requires a motion.
Make a motion.
All in favor?